Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our May 16th Board of Supervisors meeting. Before we call this meeting to order at 9:30, if you have cell phones, please turn them off or put them on silent so that if they do go off, it's going to be very expensive. And we have the chief deputy back there to make sure that you don't skip out without paying for lunch. My colleague, the chairman, Mr. Bracker, is a little under the weather, but he's going to join via Zoom or telephone. My other colleague, Supervisor Miletta, is at a meeting out of state. I don't know that he'll be able to join us, but there will be two of us so that we're able to meet the requirements for an agenda and actions that would be taken later on during the meeting. So just wanted to let everybody know before we call this meeting to order. Hi, Manuel, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at this time, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And GN, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next item is the adoption of the agenda. Madam Chair, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, no changes.
Chair will entertain a motion then to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda and allow Chair to deviate.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, our agenda is adopted. Item C is called to the public and Mr. Jesus Jerez. And remember, sir, three minutes. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. As if I needed to make my voice louder. The issue was about the jobs for the project, South 32. I haven't seen anything that, or I haven't been able to show anybody, anything that says what types of jobs we're going to be providing for the local community. Nothing that says how we're going to prepare the local community for those kinds of jobs, to bring them up, it's going to need to be certified for welding or Brick Lane or whatever. I haven't seen any of that stuff. So I was wondering if we could be provided with what they have said they would need to hire the local population, what kind of jobs they would be doing, and what kind of certificates or certifications they would need to have in order to obtain one of those jobs. I think that would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else under call to the public? Anyone in Zoom world wishing to address the board? No one? Okay, great. So we'll move on then to current events. One is Board of Supervisors. Chairman Bracker, anything to report?
Yes, I want to report that there have been a lot of meetings with Pima County talking about transportation of migrants. Just want to let everybody know that the county is working really hard so we don't end up with street releases. There's a lot of communication happening between CBP, Border Patrol, Pima County Emergency Services, and then from Pima County Emergency Services to our emergency services. So we are doing everything that we can at the county level to avoid any street releases in our community. And that's what I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you Chairman Bracker. So, a lot of things to report. So it was so interesting that under call to the public, they asked what the mine's going to do. Well, on May 11th last week, we held an Ambos Nogales Workforce Development Summit up here in the courtroom A upstairs. And we had a lot of guest speakers, and we started, and I'll just read the people that participated. We had Brian Hall, who is the EV industry overview of what's happening with the electric vehicles. We had presentations from South 32 with their HR person. Asarco made a presentation as what they're doing. We had Paul Marsh, who is the Arizona State Mine Inspector, that was telling the audience of some of the trainings that are required for anyone that's going to be working at the mine. Of course, we had the mayor of Nogales. We had Consul General Marcos Moreno Váez, and I'll speak to that a little bit later. We also had Justin Dutrim, the Vice President of Mexico and Latin America International Education out of the U of A. We had Misael Cabrera, who used to be the ADEQ Director for the State of Arizona, is now Director of U of A Mining and Minerals Department. We had Greg Wilson, who's the Dean of Applied Technologies at Pima Community College. We had Lisa Shagel, who's the Director of Business Development and Engagement at Pima Community College. We had Ms. Patty Greenleaf, who is the J-Head Program Director. Followed that in the afternoon with David Verdugo from Unified 35, the Honorable Alfredo Velazquez, the School Superintendent, Chris Young, Chief Deputy of Adult Education, Kerry Muñoz, who talked about Gear Up and mentorship programs, Mesiracema Olvera, the Director of Arizona Network, Mr. Carlos Velasco, President of NOVI. What they do is they work with companies and they have automated training, they do online virtual training. And, you know, those costs are borne by the company that hires them. They have people sign on and they do the training. We had Ms. Gabriela Castro, Trade in Motion, and she is kind of like a headhunter that works getting people from Mexico and getting them to be certified and to come over. And one of the things that we learned is that South 32 has not yet developed their profiles or job descriptions as to what the need is going to be. I know that they're looking to invest and create an independent remote operating center because most of what they're going to be doing in the mining is probably going to be a lot of futuristic stuff that's going to be done. The operations are going to be done at the remote center and the machines will be working kind of like when you play games. So it would be all technical. That's one of the things. We did press them to see what else would be needed so that we could begin to work together to try to coordinate a binational effort of training so that the workforce would be ready for them when they start off. And it looks like they're looking at 2027 to begin. They're dropping the shaft right now, but I think any kind of production is probably still three to four years away. Then the next day, we met at the Mexican Councilet where Consul Moreno had brought together a lot of the academia from Sonora. The vision of the Consul is to have our two governors sign a binational training center. And so they were looking at trying to identify what those trainings would look like or what the need would be. I know that one of the deputy directors from the State of Sonora with education is they're doing a lot of dual training in the schools. And so what that means is as the kids are in their schools, they're getting training for some of the jobs that are available out there for them. And it's similar to what Asarco's doing, Asarco, the mining. They're so farther ahead in my estimation when you look at the outreach that they have to the schools as how they're working to show some of the students what is available through mining, what career they could have, the paths. They're doing internship programs, they're doing apprenticeships also. So they're doing a lot of things to get that workforce done, which is what we're hoping to do here locally. I will say that all this started probably about five or six months ago. The Mexican Councilet, along with the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Greg Lucero and myself, were kind of asked by the Consul, what's going on with the mine? You know, how can we work together to look at the region, to make it even more prosperous, given what the State of Sonora is doing? So this event came up, you know, the Chamber worked very hard. I want to thank our sponsors that assisted us in putting this together. Of course, the Chamber had the lead, the City of Nogales cooperated, Relaciones Exteriores, which is a Mexican Councilet branch for partnering here, the county. But, you know, we also had our board participate. We had Jones, Custom House Brokers, Mr. Gustavo Acosta, Mr. Alfredo Velazquez, and Chris Young from Santa Cruz County, Unisource Energy Services, Mr. Roberto Guevara, La Sonora de México, which is a media in Sonora, Mexico, Arizona at Work, Mesiracema Olivera, and South 32, all participating and helping us offset the cost of the meals and the drinks. So just briefly, after the meeting with the Consul, the idea is to create a steering committee, five members from Sonora, five members from Arizona to work on this binational MOU agreement. But we're also thinking of adding a different subcommittee to those so that we can work on this side to begin to coordinate with some of the other programs that are available. You know, we had Chicanos por la Causa that has training dollars available. We're having a meeting, a Zoom meeting, I think on May 30th with, is it Jay? Jeff? Jeff from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Office out of San Francisco, District 9, trying to see if we can tap into some of those federal dollars that the Undersecretary spoke of when she came to Tucson. So we're not going to let this opportunity go by. We're going to continue to keep people's feet to the fire so that we can continue to evolve this program. And hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, we can have a strategic plan of how it is that we want to have workforce development related, not just to the mine, but whatever other industries can be available, given what the federal government is by 2030, having about 50% of the automobiles be electric. And so the minerals that are on both sides in here in Santa Cruz County and Sonora are important minerals. And then, of course, finding a way to not ship them off to China, where we won't get them back, but have them done, either smelt it or processed locally to be able to take advantage of that. So there's a lot of things going on. I was very happy, and I do want to thank Olivia, Consul Moreno, Mr. Greg Lucero, and the City of Nogales and our county for what we did here. And we're hoping that it's just the first of many summits that we want to have for the, you know, Greater Ambos Nogales binational workforce development. And that's what we're calling our group. You have all heard me say that I want I-19 to be the Innovation Corridor, and I think we have the opportunity to build those facilities for training probably right along the corridor and help our community move forward. So that was a long report, and thank you for indulging me. And again, I want to echo what Chairman Bracker said about, you know, working with U.S. Customs, Border Patrol, and especially Pima County, who's been very gracious in helping us with this whole migrant situation. We've been busing the migrants up to Tucson, and then Pima County, you know, helps them at least a little bit. But they've also included us in one other federal grant so that if we have to expend dollars, it'll be federal dollars. And so, you know, it's a big issue, and knock on wood that it hasn't really turned into what everybody was expecting, and let's hope it continues. But I think, you know, our city or in our county are well-positioned and well-prepared to handle the situation. So thanks, Obi Castro at Emergency Services and Jennifer. And you can't talk under my reports, it's not, so, I wish you could, but you can't. So, just like on call to the public, we can't have a, it's just your report, and then we can direct staff. So anyway, that concludes my report, and we'll move on then to Manager's Report.
Good morning again. Over the past two weeks, I attended the Tecnologuicas Conference at the Patagonia Union High School. A great job for the, to the School Superintendent's Office for putting that on. I also attended the South 32 Exploration Shaft Groundbreaking. We had the Joint City-City Meeting in which we discussed parks, community development, and roads, and potential partnerships on those items. I also have been working on the personnel policies, and I sat on a few different interview panels during the last two weeks. And as you've both mentioned, I want to give a huge shout out to Emergency Management and the Health Department Title 42, while it hasn't overwhelmed resources that we hear of. Our team has been working seven days a week for, they're on their third week already. So they've done an excellent job at not allowing any street releases, getting those shipped up to Tucson on our behalf, or Phoenix when necessary. And yeah, a huge shout out to Pima County for all their help as well, and our County Attorney's Office. We had a lot of legal documents to get through in order to spend money and be prepared, and so I want to thank them for all their extra work over the last two weeks. And that's all I have to report.
Yeah, and thank you, Jennifer, for reminding us that we did hold our first joint meeting with the city in, what, six years? And I think we're planning one in July, so we'll see how the schedule's worked out because I think that's one of our busiest months. But a shout out to the City of Nogales for their willingness to meet and work with us. We will go to item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash Investment, Expenditure, Revenue Reports. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. The Cash and Investment Report, the General Fund has an overall balance of $22,117,926 with an investment amount of $14,679,000. The Road Fund has an overall balance of $1,363,751 with an investment amount of $7,000. The Flood Control District has an overall balance of $1,363,412 with an investment amount of $272,905. Jail District has an overall balance of $5,30598 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $54,409,730 with an investment amount of $17,868,988 for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $17,526,966.
Good, we can meet our obligation. Chairman Bracker, anything? Any questions of Mr. Chavez?
No questions. Very much, Finance Director Chavez.
Thank you, thank you. So at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess and convene into Jail District.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are now in the Jail District. Item one, Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization to Fill Vacancy 4-4. I like that, it's kind of cool, huh? 4-4, Detention Officer Positions Requested by the Sheriff's Department. Chair will entertain, and they're budgeted, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. And under Discussion, a real quick shout out to the Sheriff's Department, the Nogales Police Department. They came here on Friday to assist in presenting to a group of the diplomatic, International Diplomatic School that comes out of Tucson, it's Pat Watson. And they were all law enforcement officials from Romania, Bulgaria, Norway, Moldova. And so thank you guys for being here and assisting in the presentation. So with that, there is, if there is no other discussion or comment, there is a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and so ordered, and we will now entertain a motion to adjourn our jail district and convene regular session.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, we are now back into our regular agenda. Item G, Action Items. Item one, Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization to Create and Fill an Arts Coordinator Position from the Schools. Is this a grant-funded position?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? I'll second that, do I hear a second? There's only two of us, right? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and so ordered on the creation of the Art Coordinator's Position. We will move to item two, Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization to Fill Vacancies. A, Associate Director, Adult Ed, C, Creo College, Center liaison position from the School Superintendent. Item B, Workforce Development Position from WIOA, and C, Deputy Corporal Position, all budgeted items?
Yes, sir, and the first two are grant-funded.
First two grant, and the other, the third, is a general fund. Great. Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will go on to item three, and that is Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Appointment of Precinct Committee Persons for the Santa Cruz County Republican Party, requested by Mr. Steve McQ, and Chairperson of the SCC Republican Party. A is Jermaine Yamamoto Precinct, Coronado 5, Edward M. Zuniga Precinct, Bacan 19. Chair will entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second that. And in Santa Cruz County, we have a good support for working with our good friends in the Republican Party, so. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bit bipartisan support, that's what I meant. We'll move on to item four, Discussion, Possible Action, Approve the Reappointment of Efraín Trijeras for the Arizona Food Bank Network for an additional two-year term to serve on the Santa Cruz County Local Workforce Development Board. Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in...
I'd like to point out that Efraín Trijeras has been a tremendous asset for this community. He worked with us, with the county hand in hand during the pandemic, helped us create the Food Box Program that fed thousands of Santa Cruz residents, but not only in Santa Cruz County. With the help of the Arizona National Guard, we fed people in Cochise County, Pima County, and the Tahoma Pasco Yaki Nation. So Efraín, my hat's off to you, thank you for everything you do for this community, and you'll be an asset on that workforce development board.
And I echo the Chairman's comments. Be no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Agreement with First Things First to Provide $22,000 in annual funding for the School Superintendent's Office to Provide Professional Development and Instruct Local Early Childhood Educators for up to three years starting July 1st, 2023. Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, Discussion, Possible Action to Accept Award from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, ADEQ, for the Vector Solutions Public Sector Software Service Client Agreement for Hazardous Materials Preparedness Grant, HMEP for FY 2022-2023 in the amount of $2,200. Everything in order? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Standard Professional Services Contract for Provisions of Indigent or Mandated Representation. Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that, and that's been reviewed by legal? Good. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will go on to item number eight, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve and Authorize Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office to Sign a Memorandum of Understanding, an MOU, with Geospatial GIS Support Services for Next Generation 911 with the Arizona Department of Administration from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Everything in order there? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Cooperative Purchase Agreement with Motorola Solution, Inc., for the procurement of law enforcement councilets and related equipment in the amount of $87,550.76. Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second, and under Discussion, Juan, is this, and as you get to the podium, is this, I know that there have been a few of our residents that have echoed alarms about the communication systems at the Sheriff's Department and, you know, fearing for not just the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, but also of the officers. Is this part of what we're doing, or is it something totally different?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, thank you. Yes, this is a portion of what we need to kind of get the Sheriff's Department where they want to be, right? So this is going to replace the councilets that were previously damaged through, from a storm, and protect against some future possible lightning strikes by doing some additional grounding. So this is a small portion of a larger project that we're still working with Motorola. I know the chief has kind of, we've been working together on this, but, you know, we've been trying to have Motorola respond quicker, but they're kind of, engineering is what they kind of keep telling us, that they're just, but this was something that was needed, so this is kind of what we're bringing to you at the moment.
So it'd be kind of, we're kind of like phasing things in then, in other words?
Well, this is a portion that, no matter what we do in the future, it's something that is compatible with whatever we, however we move down in the future. But we wanted to get this done because there's some significant lead times in procuring some of this. So this is not only software, but it's some boards that need to get placed. But, you know, the chief has heard some crazy lead times, but yeah.
Okay. And that doesn't mean we're not working on the other, and it's not going to be a cheap fix. So you're looking upwards of $1 million or so just to have that whole communication system where we would like to have it for the safety and wealth and health and welfare of our residents and the officers.
Correct, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Intergovernmental Agreement. Numbers, CTRs, is it ANOa zero? Zero?
Zero.
65588 with the Arizona Department of Health Services for Immigrant Emergency Care and Testing for Annual Funding in the amount of $50,000. Everything's been reviewed, and Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, discussion, possible action to approve cooperative purchase agreement with Granite Construction Company for the procurement of asphalt materials in a one-year contract with up to four annual renewals. Everything good? Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second? I do. I second. I do hear it. I tell you, man, it must have been that early morning drive I took. Anyway, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 12, discussion, impossible action to authorize public works to solicit bids for, excuse me, solicit bids to provide safety fence construction and improvements for the county courthouse and county complex. Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. And this is all general fund?
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 13, discussion, possible action to approve professional services contract with Solis Engineering Company for as-needed civil and traffic engineering development review for up to $50,000 per six-month term, subject to renewals not to exceed five years in total. Everything been reviewed and, good. But so-
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 14, discussion, possible action to approve the correction of the previous approved and ratified HIDA grant reprogramming request from May 2nd, 2023 to reflect the correct HIDA grant number from HT 2222951 and from FY 23 to FY 22. There was a correction that was caught by the legal. Great. Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 16, discussion, possible action to approve the reprogramming request of the City of Tucson's High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDA Program Grant Agreement, COT, grant number HT 222951, in the amount of $20,500 from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2023. Everything in order? Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 16, discussion, possible action for emergency proclamation pursuant to ARS subsections 11, 254.01A and 26, 301 point, let's see, 301, no, just et cetera regarding the expiration of Title 42 of the Public Health Services Act and the reluctant, and the resulting conditions of the mass migration across the southern border, straining available and budgeted county expenses. This is a proclamation that was drafted on Friday? Or is it the new one?
Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday.
So we're just ratifying the signature?
So there was a proclamation by Chairman Bracker, and that applies to just primarily the unincorporated areas. There's some argument that it extends beyond that. And then there's a separate statutory section that requires two-thirds vote by the board, and it's actually a different proclamation because it cites to different statutory sections on the same issue, though. Substantially similar, but it would require two-thirds vote of the board.
So in other words, so the two members that are here would have to vote in favor, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Cheryl, entertain a motion then?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it carries the two-thirds or unanimous. Item 17, discussion, possible action to approve application for fireworks display at the Two Back Golf Resort on May 20th, 2023. Madam Clerk, everything in order?
Yes, sir. Everything is in order.
Great. Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 18, discussion, possible action to approve duplicate, action to approve bonds for duplicate warrants, which are, A, warrant number 4042987 in the amount of $73.71, dated 12 December 2nd, 2022, payable to Woodwind Brass Wind, 4043064, in the amount of $4,701.32, dated 12 December 9th, 2022, for the School Specialty LLC, warrant number 2-110303, in the amount of $258.90, dated July the 7th of '23, payable to Great America Financial Services. And finally, number 2-110609, the amount of $1,116.18, dated February 21st of '23, payable to Health Technology Professional Products. So there is a motion and a second? Okay. I moved and Bruce seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 19, and this is discussion, possible action to approve certificate of removal and abatement of taxes and/or penalties, A through Z. Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 20, tax valuation adjustments, A through H. Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to item 21, monthly reports. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All reports are in.
Great. Cheryl, entertain a motion then to accept reports that have been submitted?
Move to accept reports.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we've accepted the monthly reports. Item 22, approval of minutes of May 2nd, 2023. Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item 20, and motion carries. Item 23, demands. I move that we pay our demands in the amount of $1,107,374.26, of which $424,056.9, the general fund. Do I hear a second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, Cheryl, entertain a motion to recess our regular session and convene into study session?
Move to-
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now our study session one, community vaccination data and needs. Jeff, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. During the recent public health emergency, a lot of data came to light, and what we want to present today is some of those numbers that we received from the state. When we talk about vaccinations, we're not just talking about COVID vaccinations here. We're talking about the normal childhood vaccinations as well as adult vaccinations. A lot of emphasis now is on health disparities, and one of the big issues that we're seeing is vaccine equity. So we put together a presentation, a little bit of the data that we've received from the state, again, and the numbers. And what we want to do here in the near future is come back with a proposal, as you'll see, of opening a vaccination clinic for the county residents, whether it's based on, you know, we hire the employees or we contract it out, but we're looking at a couple different versions of that. So we're looking to present that to you here in the near, very near future on the costs and so forth. I have Fernando Silves, the Public Health Emergency Preparist, to give you the presentation, and then we're entertaining your questions afterwards.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Thank you. And you can leave the others with the clerk there, and she can make sure that the, thank you.
Good morning. Fernando Silves, Public Health Emergency Preparist Manager and Response Manager. So I'm here, like Jeff said, we have been thinking about this idea of vaccine clinic for some time. As we go through the slides, we'll give you a little background on where we discovered the need, as well as issues on health equity and disparities. There's also some, some items of preparedness we think that a vaccine clinic will help us address.
Next slide. There we go.
Okay. So discovering the need. So the pandemic taught us several valuable lessons, and three of those lessons that stand out were about resiliency, preparedness, and service. And those three, those three lessons really kind of helped determine the future of public health in Santa Cruz County. So the pandemic did teach us that having an established medical infrastructure is vital to a public health response. We also learned that to react quickly, we must be self-sufficient, at least to a certain degree. We're a small county. We have some limitations, but self-sufficient to a certain degree to get the ball rolling. We discovered that county-run clinics are needed for long-term efforts also. The pandemic did show us that not everything's going to be wrapped up in a few days or a week. It's, it could, you know, drag out for a few years. Finally, we discovered that, and very, we were very happy to discover this. The public was very receptive and very welcoming to a public health, to public health support. So how would a vaccine clinic serve the community and what vaccines will be offered? Well, Jeff mentioned that the vaccines to be offered would be vaccines for children and potentially later vaccines for adults. Now, vaccines for children are part of a federally funded program that provides these vaccines for basically your school vaccines, for children at no cost or the inability to pay. Vaccines for adults are offered to any adult from 19 to 65 and older, but there's, there's definitely federal funding to help support those who are uninsured or can't pay for, for adult vaccines. So public health, unlike businesses or other organizations that have a bottom line that's a dollar, public health is not about profit, it's about service. And to serve the community, we have to be able to provide services, in this case vaccines, and also be able to jump into action, demonstrate the resiliency to withstand an outbreak, a pandemic, along with our community partners, but the resiliency to keep that work going and to lead the efforts and to provide the services even when others have returned to business as usual. The data that we're about to show you provides, kind of demonstrates the significant number of residents seeking vaccine services outside of the county. We want to address that. We want to be able to, I don't know if the word would be entice, but to at least provide options for these folks so they don't feel the need to leave Santa Cruz County and go to Pima County and Cochise, which were the primary sources of our, of our data. We figured they're the two adjacent counties. If they're going anywhere, that's where they're going to get some of these services. Next slide, please. So this chart here, and it's small, so that's why I gave you the sheets, yeah. This is the recommended vaccines for children. And now they start from zero to 18, and it's broken down by the particular illness that it's tackling, the age range, the beginning of their series, and any boosters necessary, all the way from zero to 18 years of age. Now here, the number of children that receive vaccines outside of Santa Cruz County, you have, for the last six years, you have two sets of numbers. They're pretty much, they're pretty close, except you'll see anomalies in '21 and '22 on the left set of numbers where COVID vaccine was included. On the right, it negates the COVID vaccine. But as you see, there's a pattern of at least about 1,000 children per year are leaving the county to get their vaccine somewhere else. We want to be able to make sure that these are offered, the vaccinations, here and can get them here if they so choose. Now, even though 1,000 might not seem like a lot, but we're a small county, so 1,000 does kind of add up to quite a bit percentage-wise, but that one individual isn't just going to, likely going to get just the one vaccine. If they're getting their full series, that's a potential for thousands of vaccines over the course of all these years. Next slide. So next is vaccines for adults. As adults, we tend to kind of forget our vaccines, but we shouldn't, especially if anyone's ever had shingles. You definitely want to get that shingles vaccine before you get shingles. So once again, the vaccine, 19 to 65 plus, when you start your series, and any boosters necessary. Next slide. And here's the data for the last six years on adult. This is just not the number of adults, but the number of vaccinations given to adults outside of the county. And that's with COVID included on one side and not, without COVID included on the other. So you can see that thousands of vaccines are being given to adults outside of Santa Cruz County. So we want to kind of close that gap and make sure people are provided the services here that they need. So what have we been doing in the meantime without a vaccine clinic? Well, let's go with the obvious. Let's go with COVID-19. We've been working with our partners. Everyone knows about the pod, great success. But we've also done other things on, on our own with, for the county. And we've organized vaccinations at schools. We took vaccines directly to schools, which was a very successful campaign. We set up a vaccination site in Rio Rico utilizing a company named DOTCO or Rapid Reliable Testing. They've been a partner with us for, since '21. We hold mobile vaccination clinics throughout the county. We, with the data, with the help of DOTCO, we've utilized in our Rio Rico site and some of these events that we've held, we vaccinated 7,431 individuals in, in the county for COVID-19. Excellent. We also attempted a 1,000-dose flu campaign. A flu, we haven't done a flu campaign in the county. We can't even recall when a flu campaign was done by the county itself, so this was kind of exciting for us to kick this off. We began in November of 2022, which is a couple months after when you want to start a flu campaign, but we had to get things in order and, and get things running. But we better, we'll be more prepared for it next year. We didn't quite reach 1,000. We got to 895, but it does demonstrate that people are receptive. And we did hold these at mobile vaccination clinics, at schools, so it was very successful and just from word of mouth, it was very well received. Next slide. So what does the data tell us? What it tells us, a lot of folks are heading out of county to receive vaccines. If you think of the, the different types of vaccines, any boosters that they might require, the number of the original series, that's thousands of potential vaccinations that we could be assisting with. I know we're not going to, we're not going to get everyone to, to stay within county, but we can definitely be a part of that process. Why are they going outside of the county? I don't know. Well, we don't know. The data we've, we've gathered doesn't explain any of that, but that's definitely something for future study and some kind of a community health assessment later on. Next slide, please. So a county-run vaccine clinic could provide the public a streamlined, hassle-free option. Some of the, just word-of-mouth stuff that people in line and such, they, they don't want us, they don't want to wait too long. They don't want to have to fill out insurance papers. A county-run clinic tends to be, it's just, we're just asking less, we're just offering to provide. So it's just a little bit less of a hassle. People are more willing to stick it out to, to receive the recommended vaccines. Also, the data doesn't tell us how many people are actually missing out on vaccines for other reasons. I mean, obviously, people who can go out of vaccine have means, but the, a county-run clinic would also help the, help address disparities in income, transportation, and other resources where folks within the county aren't receiving the vaccines for those reasons. Excellent. So what might a county, county clinic for us look like? Well, we did some calling around, we did some discussions with jurisdictional partners, and we felt Cochise County, especially the clinic in Douglas, was probably very representative of what we might see, traffic from Mexico, low- of what we might see, traffic from Mexico, local residents. Population size of Douglas is a lot smaller, but with the proximity to the border and general demographics, we thought it did, it did kind of fit our, our demographics here. Now, you'll see some information on pay scales and such, but I think the key number here is how many kids that they vaccinated at that one site alone, and that was sixteen hundred and four. So that's a lot of kids. So we, we project that we would see something similar here. Now, they have five vaccination sites. Ideally, in the future, we might have two, just based on the population size. Population of Santa Cruz County is, I mean, of Pima County, Cochise County is about a hundred and twenty thousand or so, so just extrapolating that way, they have five, two might serve for us, and they also do it with a very minimal staffing. We went, we visited, we chatted for the day, they showed us their operation, very easygoing, mellow, and the folks very happy to be getting that vaccine there. And they did get quite a bit of traffic, cross-border traffic as well, and they also did vaccines at schools and held events of their own. So very, very functioning clinic. Excellent. So how would the clinic strengthen public health in the community? Well, we mentioned having, providing services. Now, we talk about the other two points that I mentioned, it's what we learned. We learned about a need for more preparedness, and we need, we learned that we needed more resiliency. Preparedness, we don't have a medical infrastructure in place right now for rapid deployment of any counter, of medical countermeasures. We have to rely on county partners. And we do value our partners, but if we needed to act a little bit quicker on the, at the day, within a couple of days, it really does fall on the county to make that happen. Testing and vaccinations are basic services that we should be able to provide to the community in any urgent situation and on a regular basis. With a clinic in place, we can hit the ground running to address anything, anything from prophylaxis and testing for an exposure, let's say at a school, to a larger-scale event like an outbreak or even the next pandemic. Hopefully, not in my lifetime. We can take, we can take those initial actions as we coordinate with our public health partners in the community for a broad-scale response. As far as resiliency, what we did learn from the pandemic is that, well, we didn't have the capacity to maintain operations. We had to be very reliant on others. We appreciate, like I said, our local community health partners, and we tried, and we relied on them to provide short and long-term medical interventions, but we did learn that, you know, it is the health departments that communities and partners look to, to lead efforts, and having a vaccine clinic or some medical infrastructure in place that's county-run is, is vital to that leadership. The responsibility at the end of the day falls on us, so a standing clinic will help us achieve that. Trust. So, trust wasn't easy at first. A lot of folks are hesitant, but we, we did kind of build that trust inch by inch. How? We were accessible, we demonstrated knowledge, we took the vaccines, like I mentioned before, to the public, we conducted free services, and we became a presence in the community. The vaccine clinic would further establish us as a service provider, strengthen trust, and continue to, and continue to allow us to be a reliable member of the community that they can look to. So finally, health equity. So I'll just read that, I'm going to read that right off because I think it says it all. Santa Cruz County Health Services goal is to provide vaccines for adults and children no matter where they live within the county. In normal times and in times of crisis, we want to ensure Santa Cruz County residents have access to necessary vaccines, to help build vaccine confidence, and to reduce the barriers that hinder vaccine access. That's my presentation.
Chairman Bracker, any questions?
Not this time, chairman, reasonable.
So, just quickly, I mean, how did you obtain the data? Because do the medical clinics or the doctors have to report the vaccines?
So yes, all vaccines are, the providers enter them into state data systems. We, we work with the state to obtain that data, so they provided that data for us. Took a little time, but they were able to do that breakdown for us.
And so, the model that you showed from Cochise County were with the RN at about seventy thousand, and then you had a staff rate sixteen dollars an hour, more or less?
That's correct. And...
And where would you propose the funding would come from the general fund, or are you looking for grant funds or a combination?
Actually, at this time, we have quite a few grants that will go towards that. We have the immunization...
Microphone, so they can...
Yeah, we have quite a few grants that would go towards this clinic. We have immunization funding, we have vaccine equity funding, and we have what they call workforce development, which has also developed those type of programs.
And being one of those nineteen and older, I've taken all my shots, let me tell you. And some of them are a little painful.
Yeah, and I got my shingles shot, so I'm ready to go. I'm good.
That's the one that I did get because my dad had them, and I saw how painful it was. Yes, sir. Come up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself.
Mr. Chairman, Public Chair Navarro, Rio Rico. Is this also going to include people who have insurance?
Yes, it's, it's a, what they call the sliding scale. You know, some people that have the insurance can cover it, especially the adults, because the adult vaccines, the vaccines for children are free from the feds, okay? The vaccines for adults would have to be purchased, but that's part of the funding sources that we get, and then we could charge, you know, if somebody wants to come in and get it and they have their insurance, yes, we could go for the insurance as well.
So does this mean that in the future, as minimal cost to the county, is that, that's what I'm getting at, correct?
Correct, yes. We're trying to put that in the funding source as far as the grants, to be able to continue that, and through the funding from the insurances as well, so reimbursement.
And Cochise County does also, if we were to utilize their model, it does use like a sliding scale. They don't turn anybody away, so it's a low cost to the county, they charge maybe an administrative fee to their health insurance policy, but it's also minimal cost to the resident.
Any other questions from the audience or Zoom world? Well, if not, thank you very much for your presentation. I know that we're working on our budget, so I'm sure we'll hear from you guys again, and then we can sit down and, you know, when we have our complete board together, kind of see what the pleasure is and how we want to move forward, but I know for one, and this is, I'm speaking for me, is that I know my, my grandkids are fully vaccinated for everything, and I know that there are people out there that don't believe in vaccines. So, you know, certainly their choice, but I think in, in our lifetime, many of the polios and other things were eradicated because of the vaccines, and as soon as people didn't vaccinate, then they started back up again, so. But that's my personal opinion, and I feel that it's important that each family needs to make a choice for their own, but I would rather see my children be protected from any kind of catastrophic disease, so. Thank you very much, and if there's nothing else, Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn our study session, reconvene regular session?
So moved.
I'll second that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item J, adjournment. Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.